Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our January 22nd, 2024 Select Board Meeting. I'll call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM if we could all rise for the national, uh, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If I'm not going to sing it.
Is that the cheer?
Yeah, right, start it. All right. We will start with public comment. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Is anyone here for public comment?
I know there's gonna be a vote tonight on-
If you could just give us your name and address.
Oh, my name is Boyd Holk, and I'm the GM at North Andover Country Club. I know there's going to be a vote tonight on the disposition of the property at 400 Great Pond Road, and I'm just here on behalf of North Andover Country Club that has just only concerns we have is that, that if, for some reason, that property is removed, that is not a reason for the town to maintain or increase a higher lake level. I've been at the property about a year, and during that whole year, we've ebbed between the lake levels being moderately high to high, and on average, we have between 80 and 120 trees that have been permanently submerged by the higher lake level. And we're just very concerned because we have at least 80 trees on our property between on our golf course and our playground area that have been underwater consistently for the last year. And we're told by tree companies that they're all going to die, so we're just, we're concerned about the lake level. We actually don't care what the level ends up being, but at some point, we'd like to work with the town on finding out how to reestablish our shoreline, because the shoreline that existed for many, many years, which there used to be a 10 or 12-foot, almost sandy beach before our trees, is all gone, and the lake level in parts of our golf course are 40 feet closer than they used to be, and we have trees permanently underwater. So, that's all the comments I want to make, so.
Thank you.
Hi, Peter Boynton, volunteer harbor master, 320 Stevens Street. I just wanted to echo the comments about the lake level. I have sent updates to the DPW Director and Town Manager over the course of the last year. Got some feedback from Brook School as well. They were concerned about areas of their shoreline submerged for an extended period of time affecting the tree growth, and reported a number of large, otherwise healthy, trees down around the lake. And the concern was not one or two trees that have fallen, the concern was, is that a sort of a canary in the coal mine indicating what's going to happen to trees all around the lake? The updates that I sent to the town gave examples of sections of shoreline that were inundated 30 to 40 feet from the typical shoreline. My concern is that it exposes a wide range of shoreline around the lake to new erosion. The lake level and shoreline before the lake was raised was subject to erosion over decades, and so was acclimated to it. It was typically a stony shoreline, and if there was wave action, it wouldn't cause any new erosion, but because the lake has been higher for virtually the whole year, we have significantly more erosion all around the lake, and the concern is whether or not there could be a substantial tree die-off around the shoreline. And if you think about the Andover bypass on Route 128 with dead trees on both sides, I know nobody wants the shoreline to look like that, but it really is amazing how much of the shoreline has been inundated. So, I spoke with the Director of DPW and with the Town Manager, and it's absolutely true that we had higher rain than normal by a substantial margin, and nobody could have predicted that. And there's nothing DPW can do about the lake level when it's inundated like that. So, I understand that it's a very unusual year, and it wasn't just one rainstorm. We have a stream next to our house, so believe me, I can see the effects of heavy rain throughout the year. It's remarkable. But I don't think that takes away the, the idea of managing the lake level. So, I'll go back to last year's town meeting, when the initial proposal was purchase 400 Great Pond Road to raise the lake level. And we met with the Town Manager and the DPW Director, and my recollection is that that statement was not correct, and it was corrected. It's not to raise the lake level, it's to avoid prematurely lowering the lake level in the spring, when we have the snow melt, in the days when we used to have snow, so that we can preserve water in the lake in anticipation of droughts. So, if that's still the plan, I certainly support that, but I, I do wonder if there's an effort to manage that lake towards the original shoreline. And, and I would end by saying this, if there isn't, or if for other reasons we expect the lake level to remain higher than it has been for decades, I encourage the town to commission a technically competent study of the water column in order to determine what will the effects be of higher levels in the lake, not just the trees. The trees are important, it's more than just aesthetics, but with that additional erosion, what does that particular, particular matter do in the water? Does it attract more algae for growth during the warm months? I don't know. Does anyone know? I think it's a bad idea to wait until something happens and then react. We did submit a paper recommending the, the lake study to the Town Manager with a list of six or eight competent technical vendors, so I hope the town considers that, and I agree with the concerns from the golf course. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Anyone else here for public comment? No? Okay. We're going to move on to our governmental reports, and I'll ask John Strauss from the Master Plan Implementation Committee to come forward and give us their report.
John Strauss, 23 Old Farm Road, current Chairman of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, here to present our biannual progress report from our committee. Obviously, a few, you know, almost a year ago, we decided to go to a biannual basis for reporting with the idea that if, if situation warranted more recent reporting, then, then we would do, we would reserve that right, so. In any case, and to spare you all from the five pages in front of you, I'm going to kind of just summarize what we, we came across in the last six months. In that six months, we've welcomed new members, Al Manzi, Sean Kevlin, and Amy Mabley, replacing people that are previously appointed to our committee. So, the primary focus over the last six months was to continue our refinement of our website that provides up-to-date information relative to the implementation status of all the elements and strategies contained in the master plan. This is a very all-encompassing website available through the town's main webpage, and if you haven't looked, I cordially invite everyone to do so. It's basically asked as a continuous measuring stick of where the town is relative to the last master plan that we adopted in town, so. Just some pertinent highlights from what we did. Relative to land use, we have the MBTA Communities Mandate that's to be evaluated. And under the housing, we have the Mermack Valley Plan Commission's Regional Housing Production Plan. They had the community meeting. We had the survey that was issued to residents relative to the accessory dwelling units, gauging interest under housing. We also have relative to that, the, creating the ADU bylaw, allowing for residential accessory units on properties. Economic development, we have the homegrown lacrosse building going in near the airport. And under transportation, we have the funding for the reconstruction at Great Pond Road and Osgood Street, Route 125. And under public facilities and services, we are well underway on the middle school reconstruction, so those are just some, some of the highlights. Relative to moving forward, we continue to review and discuss projects, initiatives proposed and/or initiated by the town with a focus on how they may advance the goals and strategies of the master plan. These include the 400 Great Pond Road reuse, or, or whatever is decided tonight, continue the compliance with the MBTA Communities zoning, updating the open space and recreation plan, Facilities Master Plan 2, and the further development of the accessory dwelling units. Now, the big one we ask is, given the substantial, substantive discussions regarding the town's compliance with the state's MBTA Communities mandates and the community, and our committee's efforts in the past to evaluate major initiatives, such as the Royal Crest redevelopment proposal against master plan priorities, our committee invites the planning board's input, actually, sorry, check that, the Select Board's import, input as to whether we should undertake a similar, similar evaluation of the town's proposed MBTA Communities zoning law bylaw, zoning bylaw update, which will go before annual town meeting in May. So, if the Board wishes for us to pursue that, we would like to know, know later than Thursday, February 8th, so we have enough time to conduct a full evaluation. And we look forward to answering any questions that you or the public may have about our work to date.
You mentioned the new replacement member, Al Manzi. There are a couple of Al Manzis in town. Is this the father, the son, or the grandson?
Holy Ghost.
I hope it's not the Holy Ghost. I would, but given the demographics, I would imagine it'd be the father.
He's the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
So, it's the retired State Whopper.
Oh, okay. All right, I got it. So, I guess there was a senior. There's a whole line. Okay. Very good. I was just curious.
No worries.
Regarding the ADU survey, was that something that the, remind me, that the planning commission, the planning committee came up on their own, or was, was that done through a third party?
I think, if I remember correctly, it was a third party on behalf of-
or Mavick, or?
I, I, to be honest, I can't, I can't remember. I know I filled it out.
Okay. As did I, yeah, so, okay.
With respect to, you had mentioned about whether, you know, getting Board input about the MBTA Communities mandate. I, I think when you guys did the Royal Crest, it was very helpful to see which strategies that was going to impact both negatively and positively, so I think it was very helpful. So, my input would be, I would, I would support that, that study to be done.
Does anybody else have any thoughts on?
This is one of my favorite updates of the year, because I really, like, what, what the master plan comes back to is that that was formulated with input from so many different people about the direction that people want our town to go, and, and I'm grateful and proud of the fact that you guys have been following along the way and documenting and keeping tabs and keeping things going in the right direction. So, we're always appreciative for your work, and I would echo that I would be interested to hear what you come up with about MBTA Communities. In my mind, I don't know how much, you know, switching around, changing, we can do at this point, but it, but I would be curious to hear. You guys are so methodical about how you went through all of the other things, and I would be interested to hear what you have to say about that, if you're willing to do that. So, let's see. Yeah, overall, I mean, it's, it's exciting to see it broken down like this, and the things you guys are keeping tabs on, and, you know, Facilities Master Plan 2 is on its way, and we're just overall grateful, so, thank you.
I'm looking on the website, I don't see it. I'm not sure if you know offhand, and if not, we can always get back to you, but the number of strategies that have actually been addressed or looked at based on the total number of strategies that there were on the master plan?
I know, so, to, to back up a bit, the, so the website is continuously updated. Anytime something happens in town, Andrew Shapiro is quick to make sure something gets added. I believe of the 117 overall strategies outlined in the master plan, last time I checked, I think it was 12 that we didn't have some answer or reply or information for, whether positive, negative, neutral, whatnot. We just weren't able to, to provide information relative to, to, I think, only 12 of them, so that, yeah, 100-something of them have been addressed in some fashion or form since, since our committee started up.
And that's an incredible number, because, you know, the intent of this master plan was never just to sit on the shelf, you know, do it, spend all this money, produce this master plan, and have it sit on the shelf, so to see that many of those strategies to be actually impacted over the years has been really amazing. Thank you.
I was going to say that Dick always says that it was never meant to sit on a shelf, and this is you guys coming to us so often and telling us what you've, you know, what has hit on the master plan and what things are moving forward in town, and it's nice to see you highlight Facilities Master Plan 2, the intersections that are being worked on, the sidewalks, you know, the transportation, the zoning. There's so many things going on kind of behind the scenes that are, I think this spring, we're going to see a lot come to fruition, which will be nice. So, again, I would just say thank you for all your hard work, and I truly appreciated what you guys did for Royal Crest, so I think it would be nice to see for MBTA as well.
Excellent.
I don't know if we'll take a vote on that or not, but I would, I would echo that sentiment as well. I think it's a critically important piece of, you know, zoning legislation that the committee should weigh on.
And it's impactful on what we're going to have on grants and all that stuff, and how that would affect the community, so.
And if I can just add that such a type of evaluation that we conduct, basically, just to explain process to anybody that, that may not unders, know what this undertaking involves, would be, we look at every strategy outlined in the master plan, select the ones that have some applicability to the item being addressed, so we, we truncate it down to a small, smaller list, doesn't have to be small, could be a whole bunch of them, and then we evaluate whether, what is being proposed before us, does it negatively, is it, is it negative relative to the master, fulfilling those, those goals in the master plan? Does it positively address those, or is it a neutral? So, so we, we have a whole matrix that we've created that we evaluate that way, so.
It's very systematic how you guys do it, and I appreciate that. Anyone else? No? Thank you, John, so much for your time and coming tonight. We appreciate the update.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks, John. Stay warm.
It feels almost balmy today, after Saturday. All right, so we're going to move on to our public hearing for National Grid for some poles and wires on Clark Street, so I'll take a motion to open the public hearing.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have David Boucher from National Grid to talk to us about it.
That's me, Dave Boucher from National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, right here in North Andover. We have a, a service that goes to Wheel Abraider at 351 Clark Road. We've provided a drawing. If you could take a look at that right now, I, I'm going to try to explain the reason why we need this new equipment in the public way that we're petitioning for tonight. At manhole one, we have two feeds that go into that manhole. It's MH1 on the drawing on Clark Street in the public way. One of the feeds has, needs to be replaced. It's a backup feed that we have. They have power right now, but if in a pinch we needed to go to our backup feed, which comes out of that manhole one, we wouldn't be able to, to use it because of the, the equipment issues that we're having. That being said, the first resolve to that would be to replace that, that equipment, but that part of the end of the cul-de-sac has become extremely busy arially with conductors and such. A lot of different things have been built over the years, and it's old-style construction. What we're looking for tonight is to move that, that backup feed that we have in a way that is accessible for the future, and also initially, we won't have to have any kind of an extremely long downtime for Wheel Abraider while, while we're repairing their backup feed. What we're asking for is between the pole 18 that you see in the Boston Main Railroad right-of-way to manhole one, and it's aerial cable, that three-phase cable that would come from that pole 18 to a new pole, a Solon Pole 18-1. It's a dotted black. And then the dashed line going underground electric to the manhole is approximately 55 feet, two conduits, six inches in diameter, and that would enable us to bring a new feed into that manhole one as a backup feed, and going up the road, up Clark Street, and into Wheel Abraider's property. It's all, it's all system maintenance for us. It's not, it's, at the end of a cul-de-sac, it's, it's not very busy at all. I mean, I believe there's a little access road that goes along the Boston Main Railroad there that probably other utilities use for some reason, but we've also provided a picture. I don't know if you've got that in your packet, too, but that's exactly where I staked it several months ago. It was probably last summertime when I was out there, probably August or September, or somewhere around there, so. And we're finally here in front of you, asking you for the, for that entrance into the public way from the right-of-way, where we have, already have our lines, to a new pole location, as staked and shown, and then we'll go underground about 55 feet to an existing manhole to back, and to re-feed Wheel Abraider with a backup feed. And if you see fit, it would enable us to go forward with the project.
Will it impact any of the businesses during the work, or are you beyond them, really?
It's right down the end of the cul-de-sac where there's, there's no traffic. If anything, people may, may need to turn around before they get to where we're doing the construction, but it, it's a pretty big area. I don't know, it's probably 30 or 40 feet wide, the diameter of that, that turnaround, so it's really pretty big. Bigger than that, it might be 100 feet, because we're only cutting across, we're cutting across about 55 feet, which is only about half of it, so.
And I think you said this, but they would, no power would be left during the-
Correct. Correct. Well, we, that, that's kind of like one of the main things, too. Wheel Abraider can't be down, they're like a 24/7 business, and we're, we're basically repairing the backup feed.
And I'm assuming it would affect more than just Wheel Abraider if it was, so.
Yeah, it's not going to affect anybody else but them, yeah, yeah. It, it's kind of like their own special feed from our, one of the lines that we have out in the right-of-way.
We're very sensitive to power outages.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, is it only-
Yep, I understand.
Sump pumps go down.
Right.
What's that?
Especially when the sump pumps go down.
Yes. Anything that's affected, that doesn't make us happy when the power's going, yeah.
It's going to be a problem, so.
So, this is only backup for Wheel Abraider?
What's that?
It's the, oh, it's only backup?
That's all it is, yeah, yep.
It's pretty straightforward to me.
Yeah.
And the, and the picture you showed, that, that, ours is black and white, that stake, is that, that's where pole 18-1 is going to go? Is that your?
The pole is, yeah, it's the white-
Can I write the middle?
Yeah, yeah.
Got it.
It's about 12 feet from this line right here that I drew across there.
Got it.
So, and it's probably about five feet off the actual pavement.
Any public comment on this? No? Any other comments from the Board?
Madam Chair, I would just note that there are conditions placed on, particularly different in this instance, that we do have conditions from Conservation as well as DPW that I would just ask you to incorporate when you do your motion in the next item.
Then I'll, for the time being, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So, vote?
Second.
Motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, we'll move on to new business, which is our vote on the poll, and there are conditions, as the Town Manager mentioned.
Just saying, all conditions.
So, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, I move to approve petition from Massachusetts Electric, who possesses National Grid, to install poles, wires, fixtures, and underground conduits on Clark Street, subject to all conditions contained in the order.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Could I ask you, what are the conditions?
You win the order.
Or do I need to, am I going to ruin my spiel there?
I've got erosion control for a straw to be installed between the limit of work and the railroad tracks.
Back to-
Can we make sure that gets emailed to date?
Okay. It'll get sent with the, the petition paperwork.
Fire and some conditions on there as well?
Yeah, I mean, the Conservation one would have been within their original- water, but we can make sure you get everything within the permit.
Okay. All right. When it comes to the mail, yep, thank you.
It didn't seem like anything extraordinary.
No. It's our usual, like, hydro seeding.
Make sure you get it back to-
What it was before.
What it was.
Yeah, that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move on. We have Superintendent John Lavoy here from the Greater Lawrence Technical School to talk to us about the purchase of a hangar in a building.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board of Selectmen, and Town Manager, Assistant Town Manager. Thank you for allowing me to present some of what's happening at GLTS and how we may need the town's support to move forward with some, a couple of projects that we're looking at to do in the near future. I do want to thank you for your past support to GLTS. We are proud to be one of your high schools for your district, and I always look forward to having your students from North Andover. Actually, this year, we've had a substantial increase of applicants from North Andover, so that's pretty exciting for us. But I do want to talk to you a little bit about two things that are, that we need to address. The first one is to purchase a hangar at the North Andover, I mean, at the Lawrence Municipal Airport, which is in North Andover. But, you know, the reason that we need to get permission at a town meeting for purchase of the hangar, as well as looking at expansion outside of 57 River Road, is that when the school was built in 1960, or approved in 1960 under Special Act of the legislators, and Charter doesn't allow us to, at this time, purchase any property outside of 57 River Road. So, in order for that to happen, there's two possibilities. One is, we would go before our cities and towns, for our towns would be, go before a town meeting on a warrant for town meeting, and for our cities and town to their board, their boards, and to get their approval for us to purchase the hangar. Because the hangar, we would be purchasing from our municipality, so the, the law allows us to purchase property, if it's a school, from our, one of our municipalities, which is the City of Lawrence, who owns the hangar, who are deeming it a school, so that we can purchase it from them. They have purchased it on our behalf, because it went up for sale for $300,000. because it went up for sale for 300,000. We would be purchasing it at, no assessments to our cities and towns. We would be, we would be using grant money that we receive. We received $4 million from the state to move our aviation program. And so the per, the reason that we need to purchase this hangar is to get the program approved from FAA. We need to have a workshop out at the airport in order to be able to move airplanes around, and that's part of the program. And the only place you can move airplanes is at a, at an airport. So.
Can it happen at the school?
Yeah. So consequently, we, we need to obtain that particular hangar. So, that's one of the reasons that we're looking to have the opportunity to have a warrant in the town meeting in order for us to get a vote from the citizens to us, for us to purchase that. The second thing that we're looking to do, and I don't know if you have a copy of my presentation, just, we're looking to expand GTL, Greater Lawrence Technical School, outside of 57 River Road. We're looking to purchase some property down the street from us in order to expand more programming. We do not have any more property, space on our own property to add any additions, and also, we're trying to do it at a minimal cost to our communities. So we're looking to provide more access for vocational education. In the last 10 years, we have gone from, I'd say, last 12 years, from 1,200 students to almost 1,800 students. So we've done that without any assessments to the cities or town in terms of expanding and making changes within our own facilities, using different funds that we've gotten either through grants, often from grants that have been offered by the state the last 10 years. So we've been able to add new programming and add more space within our existing building by taking walls down, moving shops around and classrooms around. So we've been able to grow the school to a point where now, in order for us to grow any further, we would have to purchase something outside of 57 River Road. Each year, we typically, in the last three years, we've had approximately 1,600 students apply for 450 seats. So, demand is definitely there. And also, we're looking to start new programs that are, have strong job markets, that we can offer to students within our communities as well. So in order to do that, we do need to purchase, what we're looking at is a building down the street from us that we feel would be a good fit for us. The pro, new programming that we would begin looking to do are high-demand career programs. And we, with having more space, we could also offer more workforce development programs, which are evening programs, training people for, who are unemployed or unemployed for retraining. The last two years, we have done about almost $2 million of workforce development training for people in the evening, in our evening programs, in construction programs, manufacturing programs, and have been able to place many unemployed citizens into new jobs and new training. So with this new facility, new space, we could expand some of that programming as well. So it would be used both for our day programs, where we could, uh, allow us to expand by another 300 to 400 students. That would bring us to about 2,100 to 2,200 students. So, the, the new programming would provide skilled labor and knowledge for existing companies and industries that are looking for these particular skills. We have done a lot of feasibility study before we offer any new programs and before we can get them approved by the Department of Ed. We have to show that there is a strong job market, so that's what we've looked at. Having skilled labor in these particular areas will encourage new companies to come to the Merrimack Valley, which is always important to strengthen our economy within our four communities in particular. So, the cost for the expansion for the new facility would be approximately $6 million. The building itself, we're looking at about a $4 million purchase and a, probably a $2 million renovation, which is all interior renovations, in which the students would do most of the renovations, so to keep the costs down. We have existing facilities that we're, at this time, expanding. We've got three new buildings on-site that we're in progress and under construction. One is a 35 by 85-foot hangar building where we'll store our airplanes. Another building is 70 by 110 feet where we'll do instruction on how to repair aircraft. And then we have another building that we're putting up, that's 40 by 85 feet to, we had to move our horticulture landscape program out of the building because we're in the process of renovating, putting in a second cafeteria because of the growth. We didn't have enough room, so we moved that program. All those, uh, projects have been fun, are been funded by grants at no cost to our communities. We got a $4 million grant to do our, our aviation program, which we're building one of the buildings with. And then we had our, $3 million of our ESSER grant left that we're using to finish the construction of the other buildings. We also have capital improvement funds, as well as E and D money that we could utilize for all of the work that we've done up to this point. So at this point here, in order for us to, in order for us to expand, first thing we have to do is seek legislation for purchasing property outside of GLTS that is not a municipal building. We need special legislation. So, our legislators are in the process of, Frank Moran has been doing, working on a bill that will allow us to move forward in getting a bill passed through the legislators, a home bill, which means it doesn't have to go through the full legislative body in order to get permission for us to purchase a facility. So that's step number one. If, once that happens, we would then seek approval from our cities and towns for a bond. I don't know that that timing would fit in this warrant, where it's all up in the air at this point, as we negotiate, do some negotiations on the purchase. I know you have a, a time limit in which to present a warrant, uh, middle of February, I believe, somewhere in that timeframe.
Very much.
Yeah, in that timeframe. So, if we don't meet that deadline, then we'll push it off a year and wait for the following year. But we will be seeking that at some point. But at very little cost to the cities and towns, when you think about increasing by 300 or 400 students at a cost of $6 million in today's market of, of building new schools and expanding new schools, a minimal cost that we feel would really benefit GLTS and the communities within we serve. And so at this point here, we're in the negotiations of what we would pay for that facility and getting approval for that. So, I did wanna update you on what's going on. And as we will be, we know that the hangar, we will bring language to you in terms that would be, that you could put in the warrant. We're working with a bond attorney who's guiding us through this project, and he'll be helping us develop the proper language. And we'll bring that to you for your approval to, before the, before your deadline for putting in a warrant under the next town meeting.
So could you tell me a little bit more about the aviation program? Is it mainly just repairs of aircraft? Is it, is it small airplanes, big airplanes, helicopters?
Yep.
All of the above?
Yes, so, pretty much all of above. So the program is to train students for engine repair and a frame, which means everything on the outside, the wings, the metal parts, the frame of the engine, of the plane. And then the engine itself is two separate certifications and, that we have to receive from FAA. It's extensive process. We've been going through it the last two years, trying to get this particular program approved through the Department of Ed. But we would, we would be training students initially to fix everything from a small engine plane. We now own three airplanes, and we're in the process of purchasing a helicopter, and in the process of purchasing a turbo engine that, which is what's used in jets. So they'll learn how to repair everything from small engines to jet engines and helicopters. We have, we have consultants that have been working with us from other programs, and also, some of the companies that actually are out at Lawrence Airport, that have also been on our, that are on our advisory board from across the state. We've been encouraged by the Transportation Administration to pursue this program. And so that's what's really kinda drove us to moving forward on doing this. It's been a huge venture, an expensive venture. Just the equipment to train kids is about one and a half million dollars on this particular, in this particular career area. So, we feel good about it. We feel that it'll be a lot of students interested in pursuing that career. We have built relationships with different airlines at Logan and within Lawrence, Mississippi Airport. So, look forward to it. We hope that you would support it and encourage, encourage your citizens to approve the program. But I will give you, I will send you more information in detail as it gets closer to make sure that we get that to you on time, in terms of trying to get that warrant on. But there'll be no cost to the community. Once we own it, there are some fees we pay, where we have to pay a fee to the Airport Commission, and we pay a fee for heating, and it's part of a condo. There's two other hangars that are connected to it. And so, there'll be a fee also for plowing and minimal cost to operate it day to day, once we, once we own it, other than our own expenses. And so we'll be renovating it and working with the town in terms of pulling permits to make sure that we meet all the town codes and the DSCs codes and the FAA codes and the Airport Commission's. So there's a lot that we are working towards to make sure it gets approved. But our goal is to open it September of this year. With, two of the buildings on site will be, one will be completed in May, the other one will be completed in September, which will then allow us to open it in September for just ninth graders.
So I, I think it's a phenomenal program, and, you know, kudos to Greater Lawrence Technical School for recognizing that we have a local airport and then we can, that you can, you know, make use of that to bring this program to the community. I think it's phenomenal. It's a great idea. Also, the fact that you have your own internal labor force that are learning and, and doing the job to do the renovations is just remarkable. And, you know, and my final comment is just thank you for, for training these people, you know, these kids and, and young adults for these professions, because it's really something that's really needed in our community. I, you know, we see, we have an aging workforce right now of, of electricians and plumbers and carpenters, that, you know, to have these young folks coming into these programs is just phenomenal. So, thank you for all you do over there.
Thank you.
One more question. Do any other vocational schools have such a program?
There's one aviation program in Westfield. They're right next to the Westfield Airport there. That's the only other one there is. We actually have two of the instructors who have been our consultants as we've gone through this process.
Very good.
I have questions. I think it's an amazing program. The hangar, at no cost for our community, all of that is really great. I'm curious about the $6 million for the other part of the project. Is that, how many sending communities are there?
Excuse me?
How many sending communities are there?
Four.
Four. And that's divided among four communities?
No, the way it works is, uh.
Well, yeah, I guess that's, that's my question, is what does the agreement about? How is it divided up?
So anytime there's a, a bond which is non-fundational, so you get your foundation budget, your non-foundation budget, a, a bond becomes part of a non-foundation budget. So, what happens is we assess our cities. And so if we borrow $6 million, we'd have to have each city and town approve it. And then in terms of paying back the bond, each community pays based on what percentage of students is at the school. So if North Andover, so if we had a $6 million bond, North Andover at this point would be responsible for less than 2% of that bond. So, only because you only have about 2% of our student population from North Andover. So it'd be very minimal cost to North Andover.
And does that change every year over the last, assuming it's a 30-year bond?
Yes, so, yeah, so.
So if we had influx of students, we'd pick a proportional cost?
Then it would increase based on a percentage. So, that would be great if we got 30% from North Andover.
After it's paid for, that's.
Yeah, I ran some numbers earlier. I got it to about $200 per student.
Okay.
So typically around, if, based on today's demographics, about $18,000 a year.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you.
And we pay, just for my own knowledge, we pay per student?
We pay per student now.
That they go to, when they decide to go to the vocational school.
Correct. And they have about 1,700 students total. So, that's how I came to the $200 number. So.
But you'll be increasing your, this will allow you to increase your enrollment, right? Which means.
That's right.
Hopefully you'll take some more students from North Andover.
Yeah, we'll increase, we're hoping to get to 2,200.
Great.
Which would be a, you know, 12 years ago, we were at 1,200. So it'd be a significant increase in, and, you know, when you look at, what we train is blue-collar workers for the most part. And the need for blue-collar workers, the careers that we train for is in high demand.
Absolutely.
And many of our career areas, I'll take manufacturing, which is a machine shop, which we have the most advanced machine shop in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts for a secondary school, probably one of the most advanced in the country. That particular program, for every student that graduates, there's four jobs.
Wow.
Yeah, that's high, high demand. And we have a lot of other programs that are very similar. Construction industry is through the roof. This year, we took in our sophomore program for plumbing. We used to do 25, we have 50 students in our sophomore because of the high demand for plumbers, electricians. It's been huge, and they go out and do very, very well.
I can attest that the culinary students are fantastic.
So, I do have a, a presentation here that, at our legislative breakfast that I did, and it outlines what we're planning, how, the kind of programming we're planning for the new Elks, which is different than typical programming. And I think you'll find it much more, you might find it, that students from North Andover might find it very intriguing and interesting in a different way because it, it, what it does is has half, the students spend, 11th graders will spend half the day at North Andover High, the other half a day in this program, which are all high-tech, advanced programming in that new facility. But I'll share this with you, so you can take a look at it when you have time.
How do you?
I'll just, I'll just leave this.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you.
How do you transport the kids from Greater Lawrence Tech to the, like, to Lawrence?
So, by bus.
By bus, yeah.
If we purchase the new building, what will happen is that'll be.
Fly them in.
Also, it'll only be shop programs, so the students will be dropped off in the morning there instead of GLTS. And then they'll, and we're looking at two different options. One is this option. The other option we're looking at is totally a medical facility where we train only medical programs. So, it would be, let's see, medical assistant, CNC, paramedics, pharmaceutical. So everything in that building will be all medical programs, preparing kids for the medical industry is another option that we're looking at. So we're looking at two options right now, if we own the building, which will allow us to expand, which is in really high, high demand right now. The medical fields, we have, right now, in our medical programs, we have about 170 students that are studying. Most of those students go on to college when they graduate and become nurses or some other aspect of the medical industry.
Some of the furniture that you're seeing was made by vocational schools, several back away now.
Yeah, that was a long time ago.
You remember?
I think I was a teacher then. I started as a carpentry teacher.
Oh, well, there you go. You did a lovely job.
Superintendent, if you may, I mean, I think the mission of the school is fantastic and applaud it. And obviously, your increase in enrollment shows how in-demand it is. So I think it's actually, I do have a handful of questions. The $6 million total project cost, and I think it's the $7 million as well for the existing renovations, does that include any operational costs going forward? How is, how does that get handled in? I know we put it in our budgets.
So operate, the way the operational cost goes is, um, it's based on two things. Number one, each student is, each community is assessed based on the same assessment that you pay to the state. So if you look at what you're paying now for students that come to Greater Lawrence Tech, if you're assessed, if you get 20% reimbursement from the state for your education, you would get 20% reimbursement for every student that comes to GLTS, based on our per-student cost. So our per-student cost is about $18,000 a student. The town would pay 20%, I mean, 80% of that, which you're assessed every year. That's your assessment you get every year. I don't know if we sent that, well, we haven't gotten it from the state yet, because they haven't set the numbers yet. But it should be approximately the same as last year.
Last year was about 900,000.
Yeah.
Alright, so if it's $18,000 a student now, say, and you're adding staff, and I think that, that number will conceivably go up, or maybe it'll be spread out over the additional students? Is that?
It would spread out over, because the more students we have, the more.
More efficiencies?
More funds we get from the state in terms of our, our funding. So it all, so 20, if we increased by 300 students, that would be about $6 million increase to our budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I guess you mentioned on the next steps, you kinda have the approvals first and then negotiate the cost of the facility. and then negotiate the cost of the facility. I assume you're going to be, you're going to kind of know what that price is before. That almost might be flop that one around a little bit and get that locked in first.
Yeah. So the numbers, these numbers are approximate as we, what we anticipate. They could change. That's why we'll give you hard, fast numbers once we've negotiated what, what we really believe will be. And also, we're working on a cost estimate of what it would cost to renovate it, the way we think it needs to be renovated inside, based on a lot of the students doing the work. Right now, two of the buildings we're building on site, the students are building. So one of the, that's 35 by 85 foot building, the students are building that one, which is the hangar building. And then the new horticulture building, which is a two-story gambrel barn, the students will be building that also. We're waiting, just waiting for the foundation to go in. We've had, the weather has pushed us back a little bit, but we're trying to get the foundation in so we can start that one as well. So that's why we're able to keep the costs reduced, keep the costs low in terms of what we can put up structures for. The one building that we're not having the students do is the 70 by 110 because that's going to be all block, steel and block. And so that one, we're going to be contracting out. And that's why that building's about $5 million almost.
And I guess with, with all this expansion, my last question is, we still having parking challenges on the main campus? I understand it gets pretty tight.
In terms of day-to-day parking, we have lots of space. We just redid our parking lot. We've changed the configuration of it. We used to have a lot of meridians in there. We've gotten rid of all those and we've increased our parking by 200 spaces. And so we feel comfortable that we can support that. Plus, a lot of the parking will be at the other facility as well. So it won't be all in, in one place. So I mean, these are all things that we're in progress. And so what we're able to do this year, we're not sure if we would meet your deadline. If not, we'll just, but we, one thing we were pretty convinced of is the hangar.
Excellent. Thank you.
So just so you have some insight of what, what's really going on and what we're looking to do.
I love the fact that you're incorporating the students to build these buildings for you. It's, it's fantastic. What sense of pride that they will have for the rest of their lives.
Oh, sure.
Looking at those buildings. It's.
Did you get graded on buildings?
Yeah.
Well, we're actually, we're actually building a house right now. We build a house every year. And so we have another crew that's out building a house in Methuen. So they're framing the roof right now. The weather has gotten a little cold for them, but they still go out every day.
It is a little cold.
The other day in the morning, I gave a shout out to the carpentry students because they've been going out every, every day in the cold. So I said, I was down talking to them because I'm a carpentry stu, teacher. So I always go down there and talk to them because I miss being down there. But anyways, I said I'd give them a shout out. So the next day, we give them a shout out and the kids were out clapping for them for being out there in the cold working every day. So, yeah.
Well, thank you, Superintendent, for coming. We really appreciate the update. And you guys are such a valuable asset to the community. So, and it's good for everybody to hear what you guys are doing and the advancements that you're making.
For listening.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to move on to item C, which is an update on recycling. And we have the president of Star Waste Systems here to speak with us.
Good evening, everyone. Patsy Spurriuto from Star Waste.
How are you?
Doing well.
Do you want to start or do you want us to start?
I'd like you all to start.
So how's it going?
Better the last 30 days. You know, the holidays was definitely a challenge for us. You know, I think the implementation started off well. And then where we definitely fell short was the assessment of the number of carts that was going to be, you know, put out in the town of North Andover. I think with the DPW's help, we assessed that there was about 7,000 carts needed. We had the 7,000 carts on the ground and delivered. We, we did not get enough of the smaller 64 gallon carts. And we ordered them pretty quickly, but we had to wait for them to come in. And then after that initial assessment, I believe, you know, we found out there was a lot more carts that were needed. Not, not just the swap out of the size, but also the number of carts that were out there into town. So the 7,000 was way short. I mean, we spend about $100 a cart on the first 7,000. And then we had to spend an additional $300,000 on the additional 3,000 carts that was needed. So we were actually 50% short in the cart count, you know, from the, from the start. The implementation and delivery went okay. The, the follow-ups took some time. I think some of the residents got definitely a little impatient about getting cart sizes swapped out. And it was a lot of work for us. The, I will say, the stress that the job put on the drivers caused three drivers to quit over the, the implementation, which was a challenge for us. The, the residents were not putting their carts out in the right place, not putting them in the right location, put them next to a telephone pole, next to a car. They were still putting a lot of the recycling outside of the, the bin. And we were doing our best to collect it all. I think probably one of the biggest challenges is the number of missed pickup calls that we were getting. And you know, Sean's here and he was out on the routes himself. So when you had the open bin, people saw that the recycling was picked up. And in the cart, they felt like, oh, the, it's still closed. So they didn't get my cart. But actually, when you put the cart back down, you can't tell if it's, you know, if it's closed, you can't tell if it's been emptied or not. And people were saying, you know, I didn't see the truck and I'm going to call. And then we would deviate from our route to go and get, you know, a missed pickup on the other side of town. And that would cause, you know, 50 to 100 people to be delayed that day because we'd run out of time over the course of the day while we're implementing these new routes. So it was, it was pretty challenging for us. Month of December was super rough because obviously recycling increases during the month of Christmas, which we knew and we thought we were prepared for. But if you look year over year, you're going to see that not, you know, the, the success of the program is going to be, there's way more recycling going on in town right now, way more. So you're talking about a 20 to 30% increase year over year in the amount of recycling that's been collected. So I think, I think people are using the carts.
Do we ask for that? I can certainly pull data. I had a conversation with the DPW director today that he really didn't want to look at the data for trash recycling for right now because of the amount of trash and recycling is thrown off due to the cleanouts from the flood. So he didn't feel that our data was the best to be, or it would be the most reliable to look at currently. I have to agree with him. We did have kind of a weird, so I can't answer if it continues to be true that, I can, I can answer that our, and certainly look at our recycling and see what the tipping has been, you know, annually. But I'm not sure that the last six months are the most reliable when it comes to, unfortunately, our data.
Yeah. On the, on the recycling side, I mean, the, the flood shouldn't increase the amount of recycling that you're putting out there. But there, there were days where Sean was collecting, you know, 20 tons of recycling, where on a typical day, we'd collect 12.
In North Andover?
In North Andover, yeah. Just, yeah, that's the only recycling that, that he does. So the, the amount of recycling is a great success.
Is the 12 tons other, compared to other communities? And you're saying that North Andover is higher than that? Or where are you going to make that?
What I'm saying is, on a typical route day, there could be 12 tons out there. And in this month of December, there was days where we were collecting 20, 20 tons. And I don't know if you all saw what eight tons of recycling looks like, the amount of recycling it is. It's a staggering amount. So.
Yeah. I'm still curious, like a year ago before this program went into effect. But if we wait a few more months and look back, that'll be more.
Yeah, you're going to, you're going to see a lot more recycling. You're going to see a great success in the amount of recycling there. I mean, the, the fact that we had to deliver 3,000 more carts, you know, says that people are recycling more. And I think that's probably one of the only success.
I'm going to hold out for the data on that one because I, I do think a lot of, you know, it's, you mentioned residents being impatient. I think their patience was at, at its end come the fall. And I do think there's a number of residents that I've heard from specifically who have frankly kind of given up and started throwing, throwing recycling out. So I'd like to wait for the data on that.
Yeah. I think, I think you'll see, in the month of December, the data's up. In the last 30 days, I mean, we're averaging probably one missed pickup call a day. So it's, it's going much, much better.
I think a lot of that, I mean, to be perfectly honest, is just out of frustration and people have given up. They feel like they call and nobody, you know, so I don't, I mean, I'm hoping we can get a fresh start going forward, you know?
Yeah, I think.
I still get complaints.
Yeah, the la, the last 30 days, the complaint, you know, I see the complaint log every single day. I review it on a daily basis. And it used to be this big and now it's, you know, it's this big.
That's good.
Yeah. And one of the other issues obviously is, this is probably one of the only communities in the state that has a separate provider for trash and recycling. And it does make it somewhat confusing.
Can we, is there any plan to, I mean, one of the biggest issues right now is they're supposed to come on the same day. And I would say, especially in certain areas of town, that rarely, if ever, happens that the trash and the recycling are picked up on the same day. So do you have a plan to remedy that?
Yeah, we do. So, so I've spoken with Melissa and Republic and I are going to get together and we're going to talk about doing a joint reroute so that we can get the trash and recycling on the same day.
Do you have a timeline for that approximately? Just so I can tell people that there is a solution coming.
So I believe, so I believe it's on Republic. They want to go with carts, I believe.
So I, I've asked Republic to hold off on doing carts until we get things smoothed out. They, and I'd actually had held off a little bit on moving forward with any route optimization because things have been so hiccup-y that I was afraid that we'd have a little bit of a revolt. I believe Republic pretty much has drafted what they think the optimal route would be. And I certainly can call a joint meeting together. I'm hesitant to make any changes to any of our programming right now, just because people are just so angst. Although I will agree, there are less reported. I just took a peek to see. Most of them right now are about Christmas trees. But I, I am very hesitant to make any more changes currently. However, I do think it's helpful for us to have a meeting with Republic. And I did mention that to them when I saw them on Friday. So we can pull that together.
Yeah. And, you know, next month, I'll be doing this 32 years. I agree with Melissa. Now is probably not the time to change. We, we finally have it under control. I'd love to keep it under control for the next like 60 days and reevaluate it with them. We'll do everything we can to work with Republic. You know, Sean and Keith and I were talking earlier on. I think, I think there's some confusion with some of the condos as well about wanting to be part of this recycling program, whether you all want that to be part of this.
Can we remedy that though, early on?
So we've, so there, there has been some concern from some of them. I think what we've offered many of them is just to have one tote in their main room to bring their mail into and that they've been satisfied with that so far. But I think that many of them would love to see pickup, but it just isn't really feasible.
Yeah. And I think the email that actually even generated this, this meeting was from one of the condo association people looking to get service and was like pretty frustrated and, you know, can, you know, we're, we're open to implementing that as well.
Is anyone here from Thompson tonight? No. Yeah, okay.
This is Sean Thompson.
Yes. Oh, hi, Sean. Well, so our.
One of my neighbors.
Oh, okay. So our, our contracts with, with Thompson, and have you reviewed the contract as well that we have?
Yes.
Okay. I've reviewed it as well. And obviously, it needs, I think, a lot of work. It's, it's a little bit outdated on a number of items. But, you know, it does make it clear that there are penalties in the event of, of non-performance. And I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we may not have any other options, right? It's not like we can, because of our host agreement, we can't just terminate the contract the way that things work practically. Penalties may be our only recourse in that, in that regard. And I think, again, I've stressed that our residents have been exceedingly patient with both the deliveries of carts and the recalls that we got, people saying, I never got a cart. And then the communication, the responsiveness was so slow. I do think a lot of people have just kind of thrown up their hands. So if there's one takeaway that you can get from us tonight is that, you know, we've heard it all. We've all heard it hundreds of times over the last several months. Our patience at an end as well. So if things have really started to turn the corner in the last 30 days, I think that's terrific and I hope it keeps up. But we don't want to have this meeting again.
Agreed. Yeah, no, yeah, I don't want to be here either. I get it.
I, when you guys came to us in April, we definitely expressed concern about this. You did commit to picking up recycling that was outside of the bins.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are you still going to do that? Because.
We're still doing it. Yeah.
I don't think everybody who drives for you knows that that is what's supposed to happen.
The drivers now, the drivers now know that.
Perfect.
The, initially, the drivers that went on the automated trucks were, you know, if, if you saw some of the pictures of what they were trying to collect, they were, they were throwing their hands up because now they're in, they're in an automated truck and it's really hard to get like small pieces of cardboard up over the top. And it was, it was, that's how we lost the, the initial three drivers.
I understand. But that is important for us to be able to tell people.
Yeah, we made the adjustments. We're, we're getting it.
Perfect. Thank you.
I was just to, just to piggyback on what Janice was saying. And I think the communication to your drivers is important because I have neighbors that the drivers wouldn't even communicate with. They were asking them to pick it up and they just said, no, we're not, you know? So I think that communication is important to your staff. And the other thing is, on recycling day, there's a lot that's not getting in the trucks. And it's on the streets.
I agree with that.
Well.
And, and that's in our contract too, that you guys are supposed to pick it up.
Yeah, when we had, when we had the automated trucks out there.
Yep.
And we had the driver out there and he was by himself, there was definitely an issue with like overloaded containers.
Mm-hmm.
As he was dumping, material was blowing. So we switched back to the rearload truck with a driver and a helper. So the last 30 days, you should have seen a lot less material out there.
But other, other communities with automated trucks don't have overload issues? How does that get addressed normally?
They do, like, we use those trucks in Dedham. We use those trucks in Walpole, Milton, and Abington. And we don't have any issues there. But there is a lot, there was a lot of, lot of overflow here. And I don't know if it's windy or here. I'm not, I'm not sure. But, yeah, we definitely had a lot more material blowing out here. I'm not sure why.
I mean, I would say I've seen the trends, I see your trucks now with two guys on them.
Yes. Yeah, we, we edit, we edit labor. Sean goes out with a, a second truck later on in the day. So there's technically almost two trucks on the road every single day out there collecting all the recycling.
Because I even sat with Sustainability last week and they were talking about the amount that they see after on trash day. So hopefully we can get that settled as well.
Yeah, I think, I think the rearload truck kind of cleans that up. I mean, it should, it should go back to the way it was.
Yeah. I, I've heard a few things here that was kind of puts some of this blame back on our residents, which I'm not, I'm not thrilled about to be honest with you for a new program here. I, I do think the onus is much more on, on you as, as the contractor to really help and work with our residents.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So to that end, if, if there is a missed pickup or if there is, you know, continual problems, remember in our April meeting, you mentioned that, you know, the automated trucks have cameras. They can know when someone's continually overflowing and, you know, we have a second cart delivered if that's necessary. Are we, how are we communicating with residents now who may be habitually putting the cart out backwards? I see it. I see why I drive by every day. I look at that one and say, that's not getting picked up.
Well, now, now that the rearload truck's back out there, it doesn't really, it doesn't really matter.
But can we educate folks so that we?
I would love, yeah, I mean, the, the long-term plan, I would love to get the automated truck back out there and save the labor and, and be a little more efficient. But right now, my focus is more on getting you back to the service level you were accustomed to. So we did, we put out like a video, I believe I sent it to Melissa, just kind of like training the residents on, on how to get the carts out and where to put them and what to avoid. And we, we, we also put in the video that we accept recycling at the transfer station. And I think, you know, especially during the holidays, you have all these boxes and these big boxes. And people are holding on to them for the week or the two-week period. We could take that at the transfer station immediately and get this driver down and dump it in the container. So we'd love to see more participation. You know, what people getting the large quantities down there on their own would be helpful, not only to us, but probably to them instead of having it sitting around for weeks.
Patsy, I think I watched the video with you on your phone, but I don't think you've sent it to me yet. So if you want to send it over, I can get it on our cam program and on our social media.
Okay.
We talked about stickers too, right?
They're supposed to get stickers.
Do you have the stickers with me?
Those were the, just to notify residents that there are seven, not twelve.
Sean, you need to.
Yeah, sorry.
One of the, they're not going to hear you.
The, the stickers that we have, they were more notices for residents if their barrels were improperly or if there was trash in the barrels because we were seeing a lot of that. So those stickers were being put on barrels that were, were causing issues for us. Other things that were happening was, it's very clear on the lid of the barrels, there's an arrow pointing to the street. It says, you know, arrow towards street. People don't notice that.
It's the same card.
I would argue that it's not very clear.
It's not very clear.
But our driver for a time, he had one of the little yellow erasable markers. He was, he would circle the arrow, put another yellow arrow. You'd go down the street the next week, barrel still backwards with the yellow arrow. The resident just didn't notice. So that's when the stickers kind of came into play, starting to notice, notify people. This isn't to decode of what we need to see to optimize the automated truck.
Has that had a positive impact since you put those out?
Yep. It, it was starting to work. We were starting to see more people, you know, complying to what we need to see on our end. And then we were still kind of having hiccups and we, we transitioned back to the rearload. So like Pat said, it's kind of not much of an issue anymore where we can, the guy can grab the barrel any which way you put it. So.
Right. But I'm just, I'm just trying to think ahead of building those habits. It took me four times to get my 15-year-old to point it the right direction and, you know, not have it next to the trash barrel. And I, I get it. I understand how that, the system needs to work. But the video's not going to reach every resident and going to the transfer station isn't a solution for everybody either.
We can do another postcard. And we've done.
A postcard? Or I, I would say very clear sticker, right on. A postcard, or I would say very clear sticker, right on the lid, right where people are...
Probably each one.
Yeah. Point the business end this way, whatever it has to be.
Yeah, I think, I think we've got to focus the remainder of the year, where we do the postcard, maybe with a scannable barcode that sends them to a video, you know, to give them like, you know, the information on the postcard, but then the barcode you could scan, and it'll take you to like a instructional video.
That'll get a certain...
Yeah, and then, we, I've actually hired a full-time like social media person, so we can make as many videos as we want and post on social media, and really just try and educate everybody. I mean, the implementation process is pretty difficult, this is definitely one of the tougher ones that I've seen. But, you know, we're committed to making the program work, and we're not going to, we're not going to see the issues of what we saw in December again, that's for sure.
Okay. When would you anticipate going back to the automated truck? Do you have a schedule in mind, or...
I'm not going to make a change while things are working.
Great.
You know, while things are working, no need to play around with it, yeah. I mean, maybe in the future, in the summer when the weather's good, we'll train somebody on automated truck, and we'll start them there, and we'll put two trucks on the road, but Melissa and I'll chat before then and make sure that we're in a good position to do that.
So, on my end, you're going to send me the video, and I'll get that out, we'll work together on a new postcard, I just contacted Republic, and we'll at least meet with them and talk about the optimization.
So, right, I backed to that a little bit. I mean, again, still the issue is, although I would say I think it's maybe been better the last couple of weeks, but still, things are not being picked up, trash and recycling are not being picked up on the same day. Now, I understand that down the road, you're going to optimize routes, but what is the solution in the meantime?
Well, in the meantime, I mean, we can make some adjustments to match them if there's like, you know, like certain areas, that we can, we can start implementing that. We're not opposed to making changes, we'll work.
I mean, it's just my personally...
It makes so, it makes so much more sense, yeah, I agree. If their routes work on the trash side, it works for us on the recycling side, so I don't know where the disconnect is between us and them.
I don't know either. I mean, it seems to me like maybe they're just, you're just, the recycling portion is just not getting to all of the houses in one day, or...
I think it's because Tuesday is so long, we have, the Tuesday route, they can tell you, is exceptionally long, so sometimes...
Yes, mine's on Tuesday.
Sometimes, right, sometimes Tuesday doesn't get on their end. Trash Republic currently is at about a 97% pickup rate, which is standard, yeah.
Yeah.
But, on their end, if they're falling behind on Tuesday, right, then that's pushing you back the whole week. And so, that's why we've really talked a lot about route re-optimization with Republic, you know, we do it with other things too, not just you, we do it, just did it with plowing recently, right? And it's just, the data helps, so, you know, as much as I hate to make a change right now, we can certainly look and see if there's anything we could just do to change Tuesday, because I think if we can make Tuesday a little bit less onerous, it would help the rest of the week.
Yeah, or I don't know, do you need a third, I don't know that we should change anything, do you need a third truck out on Tuesday to make sure all of Tuesday gets picked up on Tuesday?
There's a lot more streets on Tuesday than there is any other day of the week. I have no idea why historically, or a lot more houses, I don't know why historically it was set up that way, but it was, so...
Maybe because they're high in Brooklyn.
Yeah, could be. But, there's one street on Tuesday where, one side of the street is Tuesday, and the other side of the street is Wednesday.
Yeah.
Right, so, some of it just does not, right, it's just not sensical, which is why the route, if you think about, that's pretty silly.
The automated truck is only on one side.
That would be fine with the automated truck, yeah, but, so...
Only make right-hand turns, but...
We'll look at that again.
We're willing to do whatever it takes to get this right.
I know, and you change it hard, and I think that we all need to, you know, it's going to take time to adjust, and I think historically, we haven't had any problems.
We have been lucky for it.
We've been very fortunate, so...
Set some pretty high expectations from our, and rightfully so, from our residents.
Do you guys keep, as a part of your system, any kind of a database of the residences that maybe are constantly getting this because of proper set out, improper set out?
Yeah, we do, we actually, we track every single missed pickup that we have to go back out and recover.
I'm wondering if there's repeats, and Melissa, maybe we can specifically reach out to those residents and say, "Listen, we're aware of it, maybe they're getting, they're hitting the report, so they're not, but just an FYI, of a perfectly clean conscience at that point, if we've said, we have reached out to you and told you this is the challenge that the contractor is seeing."
And you guys, obviously, it would, can come from you, I mean, it would be in your best interest to reach out to...
As I told Melissa in our previous meetings, what I was doing, I was sampling the missed pickup calls that were coming through, because it has a resident's telephone number on it, so I was seeing those calls every day, and I was ending my ride home with calling three to five residents a day. I made a really good friend named Linda, we still talk every week. She originally, like, and I was telling her the story, some of the missed pickup calls, and we failed, like, don't get me wrong, I'm not claiming we did a great job, but Linda called and said, "Hey, you know, I've been missed the last three collection days." And I said, you know, so I called her up, because I saw her name on it the third time, and I said, "So, tell me about these missed pickups." And she said, "Well, the first week, they, you know, they usually come to my house at 3:00, and then it comes till 6:00." And I said, "Well, so they got you?" And she said, "Yep, you were just, you were late." And I said, "Okay," I said, "Tell me about the second time." And it was like the same scenario, and I said, "And this is the third time." She goes, "Well, this time, they didn't come on the pickup day, they came the day after." And I said, "Well, this is a holiday week, so it's pushed back a day." She goes, "I know, but I still wanted to point out that my pickups have changed the last three weeks in a row, and we sorted, we sorted through it," and then she emails me every week now, and, yeah, she was sick, I sent her a little edible arrangement when she was sick, and we're good. But, there's been a few residents like that, and I get it, it just, the change for, was difficult for everybody, and we didn't perform as well as we should have, so...
It was a rough start, and I think that just set the tone that was not great.
I was, I was fully, like, I was fully aware of the rough start, Keith will tell you, and Sean will tell you, that we spoke about it every day, so I was on it. Like I said, I probably talked to 200 residents over the four, five-month period.
And that's good for us to hear, to know that you're reaching out too.
Oh, yeah.
So, we appreciate that effort.
They literally have my personal cellphone number now, so I've been, I've talked to a few of them, anytime, anytime.
So, I mean, looking forward to onward and upward from here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Any other comments or questions? So, we really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
We have all heard a lot, as you have, about the recycling, and it was, like we said, a rocky start, so hopefully we'll smooth it out and figure it out.
Thank you all, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item D, which is our, we're going to take a vote to, for the recommendation on 400 Great Pond Road, that the steering committee brought to us a couple of meetings back, and if we're going to accept that recommendation. Eddie, do you want to talk?
Well, you know, as you recall, there were four scenarios that were outlined, one of them was to retain and modify, which was probably the most expensive scenario, it was almost $8 million to get that house to ADA compliance, to upgrade all of the facilities in the house, the electric, the plumbing, all of that, close to $8 million. And then, of course, we have to ask ourselves, what are we going to do with it once we upgrade it, and we spend that money? The second was to convert it to a three-season facility, which would be to take down a good portion of the house and retain the foundation, and put some kind of a pavilion up there, some of it would be reminiscent of what the original house would look like, if we would decide to go with a roofed type of facility. And I believe that one was coming in at about $3 million to do that. There were some challenges with that as well, with, you know, sanitary facilities on the property, and safety as well, so that one was coming in about, like I said, $3 million. And then, the third option was to remove everything and leave the foundation there, and we also talked about with that option to not, to potentially in the future, maybe build that three-season facility, and that option was coming in about $2 million to do that. And then, the fourth option was to sell a portion of it for a private house to be built on the upper portion, and then potentially recover some of the money that the town invested in the original purchase, and, but you still have the problem of the house down by the lake, so you sell a portion of it, build a house there, there's some work that had to be done on the facility, and on the property to support that, so not really a great option in that scenario. We've got Peter here, who's part of the, part of our board. Peter, would you like to add anything to any of those things that I just said? Okay, thanks, Peter. So, those were, so the recommendation from the committee was the removal, keep the foundation, and then potentially in the future, maybe build some kind of pavilion there, but it would still allow access for the public to go down and enjoy the property, see the lake from one of the most, from one of the premier locations to actually view the lake. And I know there's going to be a lot of pushback on taking down that house, because it is considered an iconic piece of property. However, you know, as the team went through it, and others have gone through it as well, you can clearly see that there's a lot of issues with that property, that house, and right now, it's not getting any better, especially since now that it's no longer lived in, it's kind of boxed up, so, you know, you don't get that airflow going through the house, so there's other issues that are going to start to prop up with the house. And again, you know, with a significant investment in the property to keep the house, what do we do with it once we do that? What's the uses for it once we do that? And that's really, you know, the committee really couldn't come up with any valid uses for that property, because there's parking issues, there's sanitary issues, there's safety issues, so there's a lot there.
Heat, electricity.
Heat, electricity, all, yeah, true, all the ongoing maintenance costs of keeping it up and running, based on what we would want to do with it. So, those were the four scenarios, and then the, like I said, the recommendation was to remove the house and keep the foundation, and for potential future development of a pavilion or some type.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the committee overall, and just for an incredibly thorough job and presentation, I mean, I felt incredibly well-informed at the end of the day. I'll freely admit, I was a little bit disappointed at the end of the day, right, because we all wanted to see something come out of that building, but I have the utmost confidence that the due diligence was done on this, and that we're coming forward with the recommendation that is viable, yeah.
So, coming into that, as that committee kicked off, there were a lot of different opinions on what was happening, and I was one of those, was like, "Oh, that house is iconic, it should stay." But, I just had, you know, scratching the surface a little bit.
Peel back the onion, yeah.
You see where the issues are, and what, you know, and then you see the costs of what it would be to maintain that building and to upgrade that building, it really was quite significant.
Yeah.
And then, like I said, there were a lot of different opinions coming in, but at the end of the day, it was unanimous vote on the option that was chosen by the committee. And I think if you look at some of the backgrounds of some of the members of that committee, I mean, we had folks that were experts in conservation, building, TPW, we had safety, you know, so there were a lot of folks in there. We had our town harbor master on there, who has a lot of other experiences as well on the planning board, as well as other planning board members, so there was quite a group of well-qualified people, including also members of the Historic Society as well.
I was personally surprised when you guys said to take it down, because like you said, it's an iconic building on the lake, but when you start to look at what it was as it started, when it was first built, and what it is today, it's really not, it's a shell, it's, a shell is not the right word, but it's not representative of what it was historically. And I think that the cost associated with bringing it up to code is, was quite staggering.
Remind, was there anything architecturally significant inside the building that could be salvaged in a demolition?
Well, we talked about that, and we talked about potentially, you know, if we were to take it down, to do it, you know, in a way that's respectful to things, like maybe that staircase that goes up. Some of the windows, a lot of the windows had been replaced over the years, so they're really, they're not historic windows. Some of them are, but most of them were replaced over the years, and they're like 1970s Anderson windows or something like that, so they're not really, you know, anything of major historic value in there. But, there are some things, don't get me wrong, you know, maybe some of the chimneys, maybe some of the...
Put out the bid and let people buy.
Yeah, so there was some discussion about that, is, you know, having some kind of a, you know, I don't know, yard sale, whatever, to try to salvage some of it, and maybe even, you know, if we were to have the pavilion built, or the, or even just the foundation, to have some placards put up that reminisce of the house that was there and such, and the foundation itself would still be there as part of a reminiscence of the building, similar to what we have on the other side of the lake, when the country club used to be located on the other side of the lake, we still have a portion of the foundation there as well, so, a small portion, but it's still there, yeah.
I think we keep this out of order. We should have had the superintendents do here, when we were discussing what we could do with that.
They can demo it for us.
Or they could...
Fix airplanes up.
Yeah, they can build a gazoo.
Oh, it breaks my heart to take... I'm a history buff, and I'm something of a purist, and it's killing me, but it's a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, and what's happening is it's not getting, it's not healing itself by sitting there.
No, no, it gets progressively worse.
If we think about it, sorry, if we think about it, the original intent of purchasing that property was to protect the watershed, protect the lake, that, you know, check that box, it happened, so the investment in that property did what was desired, was to protect the lake and to protect the watershed around it. Now, you know, we're left with, unfortunately, a property that we need to figure out how we're going to move forward with it, and what options we have, and what would exploit each one.
Assuming that we do move forward with this, I just, I would love to make sure that we as a board and as a town in general, find every opportunity we can to allow accessibility to the property, to allow people to be able to view the lake and get down there, because I do think that's a really, really unique opportunity, so...
Yeah, and in the proposals, there was, you know, parking that was going to be provided at the top. I think there would probably be some kind of a barrier or some type to prevent people from driving all the way down to the lake, you know, you really don't want to risk that, but there would be parking that could be provided up at the top near Great Pond Road, off of the road, but within the property, which would still allow, you know, some type of access to that facility or the property.
I think if there are some unusual pieces of the architecture, or even an unusual-shaped window or whatever, I would prefer that those be stored away in the event that we do start rebuilding a portion of it, it would be nice to be able to keep it.
Obviously, yeah, anything, I think, you know...
Versus, I think you said, and it was a good thought, is, you know, we could sell it, but I think it would be better if we could keep some of the interesting pieces.
Well, we need to go through and see what are interesting pieces.
Yeah.
It might not be...
True. I don't know if you had a chance to go through it recently, but if you go in there, I mean, a lot of the kitchens were kind of made out of plywood, it wasn't, you know, there wasn't, seemed to be a lot of really great architecture there, and I think, Peter, you went through it a few more times, maybe you can rescue me here, was there things of significant historical value that you can recall in there?
Or just of interest.
Yeah, of interest.
Hi, I'm Peter, one of the 400 Great Pond Road Committee. So, there was a sort of a call box type thing in the first floor rooms, which originally, we think, were servants' quarters for the Sutton family, and our member from the Historical Commission noted that. So, with respect to things like that, I think perhaps we could ask the Historical Society to maybe send their archivist down to look at things that may have true historic value, and then beside that, some of the molding, like on the staircase, might have some, but as Dick pointed out, the family that owned it really compromised the historic architecture, particularly when they added the second-floor shed roof. It just really was not consistent with the architecture of the structure, so there's not a lot you could do with that. But, there were a few examples of that, but they were far and few between, and as Dick said, you go through, on the first floor, porch doors from, you know, Anderson doors from the 70s or 80s, and the same on the second floor, 70s and 80s things that...
Maybe in a couple hundred years, but no, not right now, we're not going to have Maybe in a couple hundred years, but no, not right now, we're not gonna have any of them.
Is anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. You know, I know there might be also some pushback about selling it back to an individual, but, you know, we have to remember, it was on the market for a while, and nobody bought it. So, it was-
Well, there was some major flaws, like a lot of water in the basement.
Well, there still is.
No, I know, I know.
So, you know, I know there's some, been, I've heard discussions about, you know, why don't we just sell it back to a private, but of course, we purchased it to protect the waterfront. And if we sell it back, we're really nullifying that reason for purchasing it. So, even if we put in some type of conditions that it has to be moved, which would present its own problems, when you're trying to move a house that's actually situated in the lake, that would be a very expensive and risky procedure to pull that house back, as well as demoing it would be as well. So, you know, we have to be very cognizant of that, too. And I, I fully expect that the Historical Commission will put a one-year demolition delay on it, so that might, would probably give us-
Except with the-
No, I don't know, I'm guessing, just knowing, you know, that, that they would probably want to do something to then go through it, and maybe look at some of those artifacts that are in there.
Or just things of interest.
Yeah, things of interest.
So, moving, so we're gonna take a vote that we agree or disagree with the recommendations of the committee, and then are we gonna work towards a warrant article?
So, my recommendation would be to work towards a warrant article for design for this town meeting, so that we can get some, I mean, these are good starting numbers, but we can get some kind of final numbers on what the actual demolition and site work will cost. So, my thought was that if you decide you're gonna go with alternative three, we'll do a warrant article, perhaps like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the design. And I would, I'm thinking that we'll do it as a separate warrant, warrant article outside of the capital plan, and that the committee could present, since we did say we would come back to town meeting, I think that would probably make the most sense.
And just to touch back on the fact, the reason that we bought the property was so that we could let the lake do what the lake wants to do. We do have, we have commissioned a study, have we not?
So, we've applied for a grant for a study.
We've applied for a grant.
Um, we've applied for grants for several different water-related things, so many water things. So, we, and we have, there's actually a list of grants that just came out, that we're looking at to, to try to kind of cobble together funding for the three different water-type studies that we're trying to do right now. There's an interesting dredging grant that just came up. But we're also, we have, I mean, we should probably put it on the agenda to have discussion, but we have put limits on how high it is able to go, by opening and closing our own hatches. Unfortunately, when you get six inches of rain, and it has nowhere else to go, it goes there. So, and across the street. But that's what I would recommend, I'd recommend doing a warrant article for the design, so we can get some good cost estimates, now we can spread the cost over a two or three-year period. And that would be a free cash article.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, or? I just wanna thank the committee again for all your hard work. I know that you've put a lot of time and effort into everything to come to this conclusion. So, we really appreciate all of that work. And with that, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board accept the recommendation of the 400 Great Pond Road Committee to remove the existing building and structure from 400 Great Pond Road.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a recommendation, very good.
Good job, committee.
Yes, that's great.
Just curious, is there any status on the property adjacent to it? Does that make a big difference?
There, there is some status on that, that I can't actually share in this meeting. But there is, absolutely. But there, it is currently held up in some civil and bankruptcy proceedings by the federal government. But I'd love to get my hands on it, because that would make a nice little, right over to the water treatment plant.
All right, very exciting. We're gonna move on to item E, which is to open the warrant for our May 14th, 2024 annual town meeting.
Even more exciting.
Super Bowl time. I really get excited about it.
So, this will, our, the warrant will open from 8:00 AM, January 23rd, until 4:30 on March 11th, 2024.
Chair, I'll move the select board to open the warrant for the May 14th, 2024 annual town meeting at 8:00 AM on January 23rd, 2024, and close the warrant at 4:30 PM on March 11th, 2024.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with that, we'll move on to item F, which we need to appoint a sufficient, a number of police details for the election, and we put that off to the chief, correct?
You do. You remember when the vote, when the law changed, they actually put that authority on the select board, and we asked you to put it back on the chief, so that he can let us know what we need.
He doesn't want our input.
I mean, I'm sure he would love it.
Is this a routine thing? This is not like anything special?
No, this is a routine thing, and I think, I think he probably knows better than we do. It is interesting though.
Do you think?
Yeah, I love it.
He doesn't know what we think, does he?
I think he'd be excited.
I'll make a motion that, in accordance with the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 72, that the select board appoint the number of police details for the elections that is recommended by the chief of police.
Punt, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we'll move on to item G, where we're going to appoint George Kangos as an associate member to the Council on Aging, so I will move that to our subcommittee.
Yeah, we actually met with George at a time when there was not an opening, and then there was an opening, and we had had a great conversation with him, and, you know, he's got time and experience and interest and all the right things to volunteer, so.
Couple months away from full retiring himself, a lovely guy, so we're excited to appoint him.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the select board appoint George Kangos as an associate member to the Council on Aging for a term ending June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, George. We thank all our volunteers for all their time and energy that they put into our committees. We couldn't do it without them. And then we'll move on to the approval of minutes for our open session meeting, January 8th, 2024. Anybody have any comments or adjustments, or? I'll take a motion.
Will the select board approve the open session minutes of January 8th, 2024, as presented?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Say aye.
Aye.
Or aye. Oh, is it nine o'clock yet?
Getting there, we'll push on. All right, we will move on to select board updates.
Thank you to Tom Andrew Rodriguez for coming to the, for presenting at the Mary McValley Chamber of Breakfast this morning, about the wonderful community that we live in, and all the good things going on here. So, a few of us were able to hear what the other towns also had to say, and as usual, we are, you know, far and away better than, better than the rest. I will tell you that people at the meeting from other communities told me, what a great job you did today.
Oh, thank you. It was very nice to hear.
Yeah, so thank you for presenting.
I got to attend my first Mass Municipal Association conference this past weekend, and that was, that was great. It was a great opportunity to learn a few things, meet, meet a few new people. As I mentioned to you, maybe to you, I saw, I met a selectman, who was a selectman in my town that I grew up, when I was there. So, he's been a selectman for 35 years, I think, at this point. So, we can all aspire to that, I guess. It's a lot of elections.
And we learned some about trash and recycling.
We learned about trash recycling, yes.
So, we're ready.
And we learned about weather, right?
Weather, yes.
Well, Brian, that's actually an excellent segue to my comment, which I'm gonna read, because it's rather long, so please bear with me. It's not that long. But I'm gonna read it, because I, I wanna make sure I get it right. So, I've always believed in North Andover as one community. After striving to fulfill that belief for the past 12 years as a member of the North Andover Select Board, I've decided not to seek a fifth term in 2024. After discussions with my family, we have great confidence in this board, and any new members, that, that the leader will embrace that commitment, you as leaders will embrace that commitment. It has been a great honor to serve on the select board these past 12 years, as we've accomplished many important projects, including a new fire station, senior center DPW facility, and the renovation of this beautiful space, Town Hall. We're now in the process of a major upgrade of the middle school, and the kitchen school will be next. All of these great accomplishments were done with the unwavering support of the residents of North Andover, who also believed in one community standard, while also placing and maintaining the town in a very strong financial position. During my time on the select board, I've had the privilege to serve with tremendous colleagues. I'm gonna name them, Bill Gordon, Tracy Watson, Don Stewart, Phil DeColigero, Regina Keen, Chris Nobley, and then this current board, Laura, Janice, Brian, and of course, Rose Mary, who's been here long before me, and will be here long after me. To all of you, I say thank you for your own selfless service, now, and in the future, and in the past. I've also worked with two tremendous town managers, Andrew and Melissa, thank you, and of course, Laurie, again, Laurie has been just a, a rock throughout this whole process. I feel 12 years of serving on the board, and more than 30 years of combined public service, it's time to step away and spend more time with my growing family, particularly my children and wonderful grandchildren, whom try to say all right now call North Andover home. So, they've taken up the mantle and, and, you know, purchased properties in North Andover, and they are growing up here as well. I'd like to thank the residents of North Andover for their support over the last 12 years. Some of them trying, for sure, the gas explosions, COVID, floods. We are all stood together as one community. I'll be certain that I will not stop helping to keep North Andover the special and distinctive community, but about which we are deservingly proud. I wish the town and each of its residents continued success and good fortune. So, thank you all, and for indulging me there. So, that's my decision, and it's a hard one. Certainly, I have enjoyed being a member of this board over these last 12 years. You know, I would say to anybody looking to get into this job, 90% of it is great. You get that 10%, unfortunately, that sometimes that rears its ugly head, and unfortunately, that 10% is usually what's remembered, and what you, what you catch a lot on. But 90% of the, of the time, it's a great job to have, and it's 90% of the people, 95% of the people you work with are tremendous. But you've always got those, those ones that you think about often. So, thank you all, and that's my statement. This will be in the paper, I think. Well, I've sent it to the Tribune, I don't know if they'll print it, but it's been, it's been sent out, so.
Very nicely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I'm gonna miss you.
Yes.
It's emotional.
Thank you. Such an important part of the board. Thank you for all, I mean, committee after committee, led by you, so, thank you.
You're going out with a bang. You've been on a lot of committees in the last couple of years, really important ones.
Three meetings, four meetings a week, yeah.
We are gonna slip you a volunteer form, though.
I know, because that's two of the, all the committees I'm on, and once I leave, this is because I'm always a select board representative.
We're pulling you back in. I'm happy to know that the future of our generations will be ready to-
I'm gonna be sitting right over there next to Stan.
I just got one little thing to say.
You and Stan will take turns at the podium.
That'll be great.
Dick, we are grateful for your dedication to this board, the mentorship that you've given all of us, as new members, as we came onto the board. And you have really touched the lives of so many North Andover residents, and have impacted the future of this town.
I'm not going yet.
You're not, but in this role, you have, yes. In this role, you have impacted the future of North Andover for the better, and we're so grateful for your time and effort and energy that you put into it.
Those are nice words, thank you.
Strong and steady hand along the way, so.
And Dick, I've been working with you the last few months, but I just wanna say thank you for your, you know, for the example you set, and you never lose sight of what this job is about, and it's about the people of this town. And, and we know how well, how close you hold that to your heart, so, thank you.
Don't worry, we'll do this all again.
Yeah, you're less breathing.
Thanks, Nick, thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Thanks. Town manager?
Follow that.
I was just gonna say, it's hard, just so budget, budget, budget. Pretty much all we're doing right now, and all we'll be doing for the next couple of weeks. So, that's kind of the realm of it today. I did get to go on a little field trip to Stowe, to see our newest firefighter graduate from the academy, which was a nice break from the budget. Yeah, so, thank you to them for inviting me, and it was great. But other than that, we've really just been buckled down on this budget, so, coming to you soon.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February 7th. We had to shift it around a little bit, so we'll be here. Uh, no, oh, do we have to be, do we have to move it? No, okay. We'll be in this room on Wednesday, February 7th, 2024.
Same time?
Same time, 7:00 PM. With that, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second.
Moved, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.